I'd like to call our Forest Lake Area Schools Regular School Board Meeting to order, Thursday, April 5th, 2018. Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Corcoran, President, Member Morehead, here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayfield?
Here.
And Member Olson is here.
All right. Just so you know, if you'd like to come and speak tonight on any of the issues on the agenda, you can fill out a green card at the table with Connie over there, or back. Yep, and get that to me. And/or is the pile collecting back there?
Do you want to have one?
Okay. Yeah, if you'd like to speak, just fill out a green card and get it to me and I'll call you up. And so with that, let's open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a minor change to the agenda tonight. We're going to have our student athletes and activity, our kids from activities, come right away instead of during scheduled and unscheduled visitors. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Principal Caldwell, you want to come and introduce your high-achieving students?
This is always a fun night for us, and I'm glad there's so many people here. We have lots of winter activities that have done really, really well this year. Anytime that they can get in front of people, it's a good thing. Our first group is Mr. Kendrick and our EMT group. So I will invite Mr. Kendrick up. All the way up.
Come on up. He won't bite you. Nice to see you.
I'm doing fabulous. Mr. Kendrick is retiring this year and has done an absolute phenomenal job with our EMT and EMR group throughout the years. And he ended on one of the highest notes. I'm not going to take his thunder from him. I'll turn it over to him. But these guys did a phenomenal job. Maybe he must be something important today. I'm going to have them introduce themselves and then I'll talk a little bit about the program.
I'm Reese Denler. I'm a senior, EMT.
I'm Brooke Maxfield. I'm also a senior.
I'm Alon Maxwell, also a senior.
I'm Ashley Akkus, and I'm a senior. This is Lacey Hallstrom. She's a senior, but she got her wisdom teeth taken out, so.
Don't make her laugh.
Not before Lacey.
More would have come tonight, but a lot of them are in other activities as well. This group of young people that are here and the ones that are part of the class really make a huge commitment to the EMS program and to become certified EMTs by the time they're done. It's quite an accomplishment. And they get college credit for it as well, so it's a pretty, pretty big achievement when you have a college-level class really in a high school setting. So they've done outstanding. This last year, we also have a state EMS competition where they have to do scenarios. There's judges that are there and they critique every move they make. They also have an academic piece where each of the teams has to be able to score well in the academic piece. And this year, our teams out of the 30 that were at the state competition, we had a first-place team and a second-place team overall. And all six teams that were there were in the top half, so that's quite an accomplishment. And the thing I was most proud of is we went one through six on the academics this year. So our teams were one through six. They also have Most Professional Award, and one of our teams also got that award, the team that was the state championship team as well. So, pretty special group of kids, very proud of them. Thank you. And then next, if I could have Mrs. Stephanie Ward come up to introduce our National Merit students. Stephanie is one of our deans at the high school and works really hard on our scholarships and other things for all of our kids. So here's Stephanie.
Thank you, Jim. I'd like to, with pride, announce and welcome and congratulate our National Merit students this year. I'd like to first welcome up Thomas Castle, recognized as a National Merit Scholarship finalist, here with parents Mary Beth and Craig. Come on up, Thomas. Laura Bailey, National Merit Scholarship finalist, with parents Mary and Phil. Noel Gorka, National Merit Commended Scholar, with parents Lori and John. Gabe Robertson, National Merit Commended Scholar, with parents Kimberly and Doug. And Catherine Taylor, National Merit Commended Scholar, parents Jennifer and Bob. The National Merit status is determined by their PSAT scores, and this makes this group of five students one of the most elite, part of one of the most elite groups in the nation. So let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you for coming. Amazing. Congratulations.
I'd like to welcome Erin Forsyth.
If we could get our individual state qualifiers up, please. Erin Forsyth, Activities Director, and have the pleasure of, after every season, going over our highlights from the previous athletic season. Tonight, we have our state qualifiers, both individuals and teams. First, from Alpine Ski Racing, Morgan Thomas qualified for the Alpine State Meet at Giants Ridge in Boabik. Morgan Thomas. And two gymnasts, Faith Plesky and Sophia Dodge, Faith on vault and floor and Sophia on the vault. They're coached by Lindsay Pyron, who is a teacher at Forest Lake Elementary. And individually in wrestling, we have Derek Cardinal at 113 pounds, was the state champion at 113 pounds. Tanner Wies at 160 pounds. Grant Parish is not here tonight. Finished fourth place at 170 pounds. And Dylan Mills, they're coached by Joe Kuntcher, who is a teacher here at Forest Lake High School. And I'm going to pass a mic down. If we could get first and last name grade and seniors, your plans for next year, please.
I'm Morgan Thomas, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Faith Plesky. I'm a senior, and I am attending Minneapolis Business College.
I'm Sophia Dodge. I'm a junior.
I'm Derek Cardinal. I'm ninth grade.
I'm Tanner Wies. I'm a senior, and I'm wrestling at Northern State University next year.
I'm Dylan Mills. I'm a senior, and I'm planning on attending South Dakota State University.
All right, thank you. If we could get both our male and female Nordic ski teams, please. We had a great year for the Nordic ski teams. Boys Nordic Ski Team was the section champions and finished third at the state tournament. Again, that is also held at Giants Ridge in Boabik. Highlights from that, Ryan Mead and Ethan Erickson, were both All-State. Both of our male and female, we'll face this way, guys. Thank you. Male and female teams, Nordic ski teams are coached by Ben Fick, who is an alumni, former Nordic skier here as well. The girls finished second at the state tournament, highlighted by All-State performances by Regan Duffy, Jenna Parent, and Amelia Hauer. First and last name, grade, and seniors, your plans next year, please.
I'm Jenna Parent. I'm a senior, and my plan next year is to pull vault at the University of North Dakota.
I'm Jess Nieders, and my plans for next year are attending Purdue University, pursuing a degree in biomedical engineering.
Hello, I'm Chloe Foster. I'm a senior, and my plans for next year will be running track and field at West Point.
I'm Ben Fick. I'm the coach.
I'm Charlie Babcock. I'm a junior.
I'm Ryan Mead. I'm a senior, and I'll continue skiing at UW-Green Bay.
Boys Swim and Dive Team. Boys had a great season, a four-peat as section champions, highlighted by some performances at state by Ben Chatwin. Fourth and sixth place in the 50 and 100-yard freestyle. Andrew Johnson finished 17th in the diving. Max True, 11th and 20th place in breaststroke and butterfly, and they are coached by Joe Mao. Athletes' person, last name? Seniors, your plans next year, please.
I'm Ben Chatwin, and next year I'll be continuing my swimming career at Miami University.
I'm Connor Klein. I'm also going to be continuing my swimming career at Eau Claire University.
Liam Hunter. I'm a junior.
I'm Logan Thomas. I am also a junior.
I'm Max True. I'm a freshman.
I'm Alex Jankowski. I'm a sophomore.
Joe Mao, I'm the head coach.
As our ladies are coming up front, our girls basketball team won Section 74A, returned to the state tournament for the third time in program history. Had a great year, finished the season with 19 wins. They are coached by Jen Wagner, who is a teacher here at Forest Lake High School. Ladies, first and last name, and seniors, your plans next year, please.
I'm Catherine Taylor. I'm a senior, and I'll be pursuing a degree in chemical engineering from the University of Minnesota.
I'm Grace Van Bergen, and I'm going to Kansas to major in sports management and special education.
My name is Maya Tanberg, and I'm a senior, and I'll be playing golf at the University of Arkansas Monticello and majoring in environmental science.
I'm Abby Leach, and I'm a junior.
Maddie Rice. I'm a junior.
I'm Lexi Goken, and I'm a junior.
I'm Anna Reif-Schneider, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Bailey Hanson. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Maddie Krieger, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Allison Olson, sophomore.
I'm Logan Anderson, and I'm a freshman.
You did a good job. Did a great job. Congrats. Here they come, the boys.
Next, we have our boys basketball team coming up front. Also finished the season with 19 wins before heading down to Minneapolis in the Target Center for the state tournament. Boys finished sixth at the state tournament. They're coached by Dan Cremasino, who teaches here at Forest Lake High School. Coach Cremasino was also the 4A Minnesota State Coach of the Year, as elected by his Very cool to have both genders in one sport down at the state tournament two consecutive weeks. It was a great experience for school and community. First and last name, gentlemen, and seniors, your plans next year?
Manny Jinko, and I'm a senior, and I have not decided where I will be playing basketball next year.
I'm Dylan Corcoran. I'm a senior. I'm going to be going to University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, and studying biology.
I'm Zach Holly. I'm going to NDSU next year.
I'm Steven Cologne. I'm a senior, and I'll be attending Nell Ramsey Community College next year to play basketball.
I'm Connor Toki, and I'm a junior this year.
I'm Spencer Parent. I'm also a junior this year.
Kevin Larson. I'm a junior.
Eric Peterson. I'm a sophomore.
Cooper Berg, and I'm going to St. John's to play basketball next year.
Harrison Taylor, sophomore.
And Dan Cremasino, head coach.
Good job. Lots of fun to watch. That's right. Beautiful, guys.
Any comments from the board?
Wow, every sport, almost. Every winter sport was here, right?
What's that?
Every winter sport was here.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank our athletes for coming out tonight. We really appreciate our athletes and our scholars for coming out, and oftentimes an overlap there, for coming out tonight. And just to let you guys know how much I appreciate you representing this school in such a positive way. I know that our athletes have great academics, and every time you go out there and you represent our school, you make us look good, and we appreciate that. And I also want to thank the parents and all the time they put into, you know, making sure people are getting in, making sure they're doing their homework, and getting to practice, and supporting everything so that kid can achieve at their highest. I really appreciate it, and I think I speak for the entire board, so.
Absolutely. Yes, very good. Very beautiful.
All right, do we have, I've got one green card here, meaning a person who would like to speak. If somebody would like to speak, if they can fill out a green card and get it to me right away, you can come up to the microphone and speak on one of the topics on the agenda. But I've got the one card, Holly Wojahoski.
Yeah, Wojahoski. Where is she? Right to she comes.
Was I close?
Right over to the.
No.
Just say Holly W.
Do that, or the kids that love the Nashville trip, um, team of Oskey.
We should turn that around.
It is pronounced Wojahoski.
Could you turn the microphone?
Yeah.
Where's the camera at? Where's the camera person? He's over here. He's at it. She wouldn't want to do that.
My name is Holly Wojahoski, and I'm the Forest Lake Music Booster Vice President and oh, does she speak English?
Doesn't matter.
Traditionally, you face the board.
It's kind of awkward. Tradition, yeah. It's just kind of a weird setup. Kind of awkward.
Okay. Okay. So I'm Holly Wojahoski, and I am the Forest Lake Music Booster's Vice President. And we did a, I did speak to Gail and Luke at the listening session and Dr. Massey. Basically, we just wanted to give you guys a little bit of rundown for those of you who weren't there. The Music Boosters hired a professional by the name of Dr. John Benham. And just to give you a little bit about him, he is a renowned music professional who comes in, and he's done over 4,000, he's an analyst, and he's done over 4,000 schools over the span of well over 35 years. And he has local ties here to the community. He lives in Blaine, and he was hired to basically study the health of the Forest Lake Music Program. And he did a survey with the Forest Lake music teachers and also with Dr. Massey, and he compiled all of that in a very short time. He held a meeting with anyone who was interested on March 24th, and from there, he came up with a 52-page report that was, it was very lengthy, but it compiled a lot of good information about the health of our music program. So basically, his report overwhelmingly shows that the wisdom of considering any cuts in the Forest Lake schools' music program is at best questionable from the aspect of its financial validity. Moreover, the resulting devastation to the music curriculum and the lifetime loss of opportunity to the students is without justification. And just a few quick points from that report is that we recognize the need for fiscal responsibility within the school district in a time of difficult funding, and we recognize that. We also recognize that the potential for increasing student participation in band, orchestra, and choir is, and its financial advantage to the district. We recognize that a strong music program is important to the image and economy of the school district and the community. We recognize the importance of maintaining a strong music program for the social, academic, and intellectual development of the total student. We recognize that parents of music students make a significant financial investments in the school district with the rental and purchase and maintenance of their own music instruments and the raising of funds to assist in the operation of the music program. We also recognize that there will be a significant decline in student participation should the district consider any reductions in the music curriculum. And we also recognize the potential for the collapse of the entire music program should cuts be made. And we cannot continue to produce quality music students if music cuts are made to the music program at any level. We started our music program too late, which is outlined in his report, and it goes without saying that our students cannot become accomplished students without our teachers, beginning at that elementary school age. And that the school board, or not the school, but I apologize. The Music Boosters are asking two things. Our requests are, one, that you do not make any cuts or any other reductions in the district music program, and that, two, that you appoint a district task force as outlined in the report. Consider restructuring the music program for the best interest of the student, the budget, and the community. We also recommend that the facilitator of this task force be from outside of the district. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good idea.
All right, do we have any other green cards? All right, scheduled and unscheduled visitors, Listening Session Report, Member Olson and Odegaard?
Was actually Gail and Luke.
Oh.
Gail's going to summarize it.
Member Tyson?
Actually, I'll give the report, yeah. We had a very robust crowd, would you say, Luke, for the listening session. We heard from students, teachers, parents, had a lot of good exchanges and information about their concerns, and a lot of talk about what a fabulous music program we have and how valuable it is to students. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sure.
All right, student achievement, Forest View Elementary's. Principal Ernest?
This is always a tough thing here with my back to the crowd, wanting to talk to you and wanting to talk to the people behind me, too. But my name is Scott Ernest, principal of Forest View Elementary School, and I want to thank the board for having us here tonight, and hi to Dr. Massey.
Can you pull the microphone? You just take.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. So I guess I didn't know there was going to be such a crowd when I signed up for this night many, many months ago, but it's great because we have a great thing to share. At Forest View, we have a lot of great initiatives going on. We are big into picturing and writing. We're a big PBIS school. We started reciprocal teaching. And I brought with me tonight, one of our awesome EBD teachers, Shannon Wedger. Shannon's a part of our PBIS team. And this summer, we came up with an idea that we really wanted to explore with some social skills lessons in our classrooms, but we also wanted to help out the teachers to kind of have a reciprocal teaching lesson that went along with it. And so we asked our teachers to do one social skill, they do a lot more than this, but one social skills lesson a month that's tied with reciprocal teaching as well. And it goes along with our PBS, PBIS lessons, and Shannon worked extremely hard this summer and basically developed this program. And we haven't branched out and shared this yet with other staffs, but we want to make sure that we have it rocking and rolling at Forest View. So I'm going to turn it over to Shannon. We are fortunate to have Shannon at Forest View. She's actually been at Forest View for 17 years. She snuck away from us to North Branch for one year, but we got her back. So Shannon Wedger.
Thank you very much. So really what we want to do is.
The microphone.
You left it on, right? Okay. What we really wanted to do is, all those great things that we have going on at Forest View, our plates are full, and we wanted to tie it all together. And the best way to do that, teachers that are in our school read to their classrooms all the time, so the best way to do that was to take a book and a character and be able to build in a social skill. PBIS is positive behavior, and therefore, being able to do a lesson within that positive behavior makes it easy for teachers through a book. And so we decided to go with Julia Cook, who does a ton of children's social skills books. Coming from a special education background, I'm very familiar with those, but classroom teachers, not necessarily. So what we did over the summer, and Scott did put it all on me, but we did it as a team. The PBIS team decided the best way to tie PBIS, reciprocal teaching, and classroom management, really, is to be able to have one lesson a month that ties in also with our counselor in our building. And so we started with our counselor's schedule, and we set up books that matched that lesson. And that way, all of our students are hearing the same messages about social skills, not only from the special education point, but we're also hearing it from our librarian, our gym teacher, the classroom teacher, and any other specialists that might be able to read a story. And so we wanted to make it simple. And what we created is kits, and right here, and I'm not going to pick it up, but right here is a kit that we happen to have. We created one for kindergarten, first, second, and third, and one for the specialist. Inside the kit is books that are all social skills-based books. And from there, we created a document. We created a document that says what grade level needs to read what book out of their kit that month. And on here, if you see, in kindergarten, first, in September for kindergarten, we had them read, I don't just like, I don't like the sound of no. And they could go to this document, find their story, go to their kit, pull the book, and read it. That's all we asked them to do. However, for the teachers who their classroom, the kids don't listen to know very well, or the teacher who really liked the book and want to do more about it, we created activities. So the links on the side actually bring us right to the actual lesson. And in there, and I'm going to just go this way instead because I'm not sure about our, in there is a printed lesson for every one of the books, and I'll actually just put this one out here for you guys to look at. This is one of ours. And every, every book has a page, and if you notice, the emblem's on the top. That reminds every teacher, this is a reciprocal teaching moment. That's the fabulous "for" from reciprocal teaching. And then it asks questions. It gives activities. We've printed them out. However, there's an electronic document, so if a teacher likes the project, we didn't print it out ahead of time for them. They just go here, and they can print it out. That way, every teacher, it's this quick for them to get it together. The book is right there in the kit, and we know that every student's hearing a message once a month. And that's kind of how we've tied it all together at Forest View.
Wonderful job.
Does the board have any questions?
Principal Gary. Sometimes they hear a lot of acronyms, and could you just tell us PBIS, what that means? And maybe if folks here, and we use them so readily that we forget to explain them.
PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention System, basically is the way I look at it. We have, at our school, we have B rules. We have three of them. Be safe, be kind, be responsible. And so we have all sorts of rules under each of those areas, hallway, classroom, playground, cafeteria. So we're constantly talking about those rules, and those rules tie in really well with all of those social skills lessons, and it really ties in with reciprocal teaching, too, that we've been pushing really hard this year at Forest View. So can't say enough about it. We've been fortunate. I'm going to let the cat out of the bag. We just got an email. We received a $2,000 grant.
Yay.
We just found that out, so we'll be able to do some cool things with that through PBIS again. So I'm just thrilled with how that's worked in our building.
We've had a lot of positive feedback from our teachers in our building.
So that was my question. Do you feel like staff are noticing a difference, the teachers, the behavior?
I think we can talk from different points. My point, because I am a teacher in the building, I originally brought it up to our PBIS team, and I felt like there was going to be a ton of pushback because we're requiring one more thing. But I think the way we pulled it together and be able to tie in reciprocal teaching and all of our PBIS, and all of our teachers.
and all of our PBIS, and all of our teachers already read to their students. So, we're just asking once a month to read this book instead of whatever book it would be that we need. And it's been a huge positive, at least that's what I...
Yeah, and we can talk as a group on that as well, where we have, if we have behavior referrals, I enter all those, and it's in a program called SWISS. And you'd be amazed, I mean, we are probably, at this point in the year, we're at 200 less referrals than we were last year. So, I want to say that this is a part of that. So, I feel good about that when you really look at the data, so.
Good lessons for at home. Do you hear anything back from the parents? Like, maybe they are getting some of these social skills they're using at home with their siblings and...
Yeah, and we've had, we've had situations that happen, and parents will come in and ask for some help. And we have a lot of these great books that, we've already had a bunch of copies of these, so we're able, our counselor's able to send those books home, and parents read them with their kids.
On a personal level, I have a kindergarten student who I was talking to his parent the other day, and we were talking, and she said, "He told his little brother that was unexpected." One of the skills we teach at our...
That's true.
Unexpected at home, that's great.
Well, I just wanted to add, I'm so proud of all of our buildings that have the PBIS. We have quite a few now, and we're so proud of that and how you've taken it to that next level. Thank you for making that efficient, seamless bucket you have. That's awesome.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, positive happenings, positive happenings is where, as board members, we just kind of talk about some of the things that we've been involved with around the district that we find very positive. Member Olson, would you like to start?
Yes, I went to my first special ed advisory committee in March or April, and then that followed up with a transition workshop for middle school and high school students. Fabulous program for parents and educators. I also went to the Forest Lake Area Expo at Marinatha and the wonderful talent show that we had here at the high school.
Thank you. Member Corcoran?
I, well, just talking about basketball, of course, my son's in basketball, and so we got to enjoy some great, exciting games. Had a great season, boys and girls. And it's nice to see the banners on the wall of all the students going to colleges and their, their secondary options, what they're going to be doing. It's just, it's so encouraging to see all the great choices they're making and all the great futures that they have. And also, I attended the blood drive, so I actually gave blood today, and I talked to the student council, and they made their quota, so they'll begin a nice grant, a scholarship for the student council. So, then I think their quota was 92, and I think they had like 97.
Nice.
So, I was there at the very end, and they were pretty excited about it. So, I got to enjoy that today, and I guess that's it.
Member Morehead?
I've been to the Lionel Lakes PTO, and would like to announce they have a carnival coming up on Saturday, so if any grandparents are here and want to treat their grandchildren, it's a good place to support the school and make the grandkids happy. Starts at 11:00. The FFA had their Chapper banquet, and if you've never really looked into the FFA, it's an amazing program, one of our very finest, and they are all national winners as well. They could have had them here, talking about their accomplishments. And I went to the MSBA Day at the Capitol, trying to, again, tell the folks down there that since they make the rules, they should listen to the local control people because they know how it's, all comes together. So, we have a couple of bills down there we're working on. Went to CPA Play in Hugo. It was a Schoolhouse Rock. Those of you that are a little older might remember, they did the addition and multiplication and all of that to music, and kids, speaking of music, kids learned it a lot easier and better that way. And Wyoming Elementary had a fantastic Liberty Day program. And they had a wax museum where they all dressed up, and the costumes were just really wonderful. I don't know who got them together, but there was one gal, she was standing in the wax museum, and there was a little button, and it said, "Push me." I said, "So, should I push the button?" And she said, "Yes, because I'm a wax figure, and then I'll talk." They got really into their thing. And what a marvelous lesson. And kudos to the Lions, who, yeah, the Lions helped them with that quite a bit. And then, I went to curriculum instruction for half of it because there was another thing going on that night. But that's it. There's a lot of good things going on. We could go every day to something.
Can I add one more thing? Of course, we have our wonderful tickets here for the Bethel concert tomorrow night for our music program. It's the 22nd Annual Bethel Concert Tomorrow at Benson Hall in Bethel University at 7:30. Tickets for adults are $10, and I think students and seniors are eight. It's a great event. We've been attending it as a board for many, many years, and it's just a great way to showcase our music students. So, if you, if you can get there tomorrow night, I advise you to go. It's just a great evening out with family.
Yeah, thank you. Member Peterson?
Well, I would probably be in some serious trouble if I didn't announce the Wyoming Gala coming up, April 14th, at Split Rocks, for, about being put on as a fundraiser by the Wyoming PTA. That is an adult-only event up there at Split Rocks. And then, I also attended the Rangers Have Talent Show, and that was an amazing show. There's some very talented students in our district. I had a great time.
I was able to make the third meeting of the school funding task force, and we will receive a report, a summarized report from that task force later this evening.
Member Tyson?
Yes, and I as well went to the FFA banquet with Karen. It was fun to sit with a young girl. It was her first year in FFA. And then, and I sat with Mr. Caldwell and their family, and then to see her onstage during the program, you know, speaking at the podium and just having this presence, it was a really nice night and a fun banquet. Also, went to the boys' basketball semifinal, super exciting game against Apple Valley. Lost my voice again. And then, the Rangers Got Talent had an art program this year, kind of added on, and it was really fun to just have that combination of that art and be able to admire all that hard work. I went to the second school funding task force, so looking forward to that report, and just was great working with them and all that critical thinking and all that, and that deeper dive into all of our financial portrait and funding portrait with them. I also want to mention that the Festival of Culture is coming up. That's going to be the 13th annual. So, that's Friday, the 13th, for five, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at the high school. So, be sure to take that in if you have the night free. Also, the ECFE Garage Sale, I believe, is the 17th of this month. I know a lot of moms in my neighborhood are planning on being, and getting involved with that, so. And Karen mentioned the Lionel Carnival, and that's always a great time. Very hot, dress cool.
Not this year.
No?
Hot?
Well, it's always hot in there.
Oh, well. I just remember outside.
So, that concludes my report.
All right, reports, workshops, and conferences. Do we have anything to report? All right, communications committee, member Olson.
Communications Committee, Ross gave us our legislative update. He said school safety is a hot topic in the legislature this year, and we also discussed the Lakes Area Expo.
All right, 916, member Olson.
We had a great presentation from John Choi, who's a Ramsey County attorney. They are trying to develop a new referral system that uses data-driven decision-making to transform the way our public systems work together in support of our youth. And what that kind of means is they will bring more resources to the front of the line in order to help our kids get through life and school and avoid the justice system in the end. So, that was a fabulous presentation. And we also have a program visit on April 18th for the Pankala Education Center.
All right, thank you. Equity Alliance, member Morehead?
We have our meeting coming up, the 3rd Wednesday of this month. And in the meantime, I was on the personnel committee, and what they're doing there is trying to reorganize the personnel as other districts and certainly ours. Money is always tight, and so they're trying to make good use out of all the dollars. So, there'll be some changes made as far as the employees go, and it'll be presented at the board meeting on the 3rd Wednesday, so we'll see how that goes.
Thank you. Policy Committee, member Tyson?
Yes, this will come up under new business. We discussed discipline policy 515, and then 511, memorials. That concludes my report.
Okay. Staff welfare, member Corcoran?
We discussed instructional day, and that'll be coming up in some of our budget cuts coming up at the rest of the meeting. And we talked about our budget development, which is also showing up on our 1,007 allocation, and also school safety, talking about the resource officers and how we're changing some of their time to keep all the resources of our officers, to keep the safety of our students and reorganizing with the new junior high coming.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee, member Odegaard?
We had a revenue review by MMKR, our auditors, so we took a deep dive into how our revenue for the year was shaping up. And then, we had a health plan strategy review by Balance Point Strategy, basically contracted with them to review the district's benefits, health insurance. And they gave a pretty comprehensive report on how, how robust and how great our health insurance and benefits are for our employees, so that was good to hear. And then, we also briefly discussed a budget adjustment that will show up later on the agenda.
All right, thank you. City of Forest Lake, member Tyson and member Morehead, do we have a report?
Well, I think everyone...
Go ahead, can I?
Sorry, we didn't get together on this. Everyone that saw the Forest Lake Times is aware that there was a new councilperson chosen the other evening, and it will be a very important position because it comes in to break a lot of two-to-two ties, one of which is Monday night. Hopefully, the medical facility that's trying to come into Forest Lake for the six-year-old to 17-year-old mental ill conditions, regional opportunity for Forest Lake to make some real economic development in past. It's like a present falling into the district, into the city. But there has been some discussion on that, so if you have an opinion on that and can come Monday night, there'll be a lot of people there to discuss that, and it'll be the new vote for the new person. So, I think that's what's kind of taking everybody's time right now, trying to get that facility into our area.
All right, Nathan?
I was just going to add that they had their 4th of July fundraiser and fish fry with the pie in the pool, so a lot of those pictures were very fun to see. And I believe they interviewed 13 residents on Monday after selecting, so...
They did. We had some fantastic folks step up to the slate.
Yep, so that concludes my report.
Hopefully, they'll stay interested.
All right, buildings and grounds, member Peterson?
We also got an update on the legislative process going on. We had a bond project update, which I won't go into deeply because we'll get that report shortly. Bill gave us a report on a pool repair and his ability to save several thousand dollars in getting us a pool cleaner that was basically rebuilt, assembled from parts from, because ours is so old, it's been discontinued, from a gentleman who bought out the stock from the company when they closed down, and building us a, refurbishing our current model on the cleaner, which was always nice to hear. He also updated us on the ongoing training for the employees to maintain OSHA compliance. And then, the fire marshal did several inspections throughout the district and offered us opportunities with all the construction going on. And we're also currently offering a small engine repair class at one of the facilities, which was nice to hear.
All right, thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, reshaping opportunities for success, 2015, 2020. Director Martini?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'll try to move around because some of the things I typically share with folks are pictures of the facilities. Now, this evening, I excluded the high school because a lot of you I heard walking in, "Wow, this is different than I remember." What we usually do is share with you who the major players are relative to architects and construction managers. Martin Pezner Engineering, KOMA Architects, and Kraus Anderson are handling all of the elementary projects for us. In the secondary, it's DLR and ICS Consulting. Later this evening, I think on the agenda, item number 94, relative to the levy referendum, Stacy Childers from Springstead will eventually be doing the calculations that will assist us in determining tax impact should we go out for a levy referendum. So, I'm going to walk through a few photos after I share with you the schedule. Mike Kopitz attends all of these construction meetings, along with the principal of each facility that is currently involved, and the head custodian from each of those facilities. So, it's quite a busy schedule. First stop, the new middle school. So, it's very exciting. This is a shot looking east at the new classroom wing on the left and the new gymnasium off on the right. And we thought we'd take this opportunity, relative to the new gymnasium, to walk you through the hallway from the existing building into the facility. So, this is the view of the new hallway as you're exiting. Normally, kids would have been able to go outside and go to the pond out back at the south side of the facility. So, this is looking due south. You turn that corner, they're still working, of course, but you turn that corner again, and now you can see the entrance to the gymnasium where this is taking shape. It's really exciting that this will be done well in advance of school. Let's shift gears and take you to Lionel Lakes Elementary. You might recall this photo from March. Recall, we share these types of updates at all of our board meetings. This is the April photo.
Wow.
So, with all of that glass, it's really exciting to see. Again, shifting gears to Scandia Elementary. Many folks might not be aware this evening, but Scandia had all of the classrooms that are on the closest section, which is the northern wing of the building, move into different parts of the facility. They built temporary classrooms in the media center, which is just off to the right. And this is a classroom in that northern wing after abatement, so the flooring's been removed. And you'll notice mastic behind the whiteboards and/or chalkboards were removed off to the right. And this is actually the first day back after spring break. That's when this photo was taken, and these photos were taken. Those rooms now no longer have walls on the exterior off to the right. As a matter of fact, if you look closely, the wheelbarrow that's off to the left, that's the same wheelbarrow in this photo. So, it's wide open. And they begin to board it up. And now, a look at the roof of that same northern section. And then, from a different angle, you'll notice the GP Jip Board that's on the side of the facility where they've knocked out the walls. So, again, Linwood Elementary, that's already been bid. And here is the update for where we're heading. We're going to begin Wyoming Elementary design here this summer. So, this is pretty exciting. Last slide is always questions and comments. Any?
Well, I have been past Scandia Elementary, Larry, and there is a lot going on there. Wow. When will that conclude?
So, because we're able to start this spring break, that will actually conclude this summer.
Okay.
And we hope to be finished, just like we were with Columbus, in the course of a single summer. It's not as extensive a project like Linwood or Lionel Lakes.
Great, thank you.
Larry, are we still on time and under budget?
I'm glad you're writing the headline. We are on time and under budget with the bond project, which many of you are fully aware, but the audience may not know. Those are separate funds, and they're not operating funds. They're for construction only. But we're so excited that this project is on time and under budget.
Yeah. It's terrific.
And I just want to thank the community again because, yes, there is a difference between building bond money and levy money, two different areas that can't be combined or changed to put one together. But for the community to have passed that, that we now have all of our buildings, soon to have all of them, safe and secure and up to date, and something that all of you and certainly all of us can be very proud of, that when people come from outside, they now see the school district that is trying to stay into the 21st century. And now, you know, the learning piece comes next because we got the outside, now we're working hard on the inside. But two different pots of money, and I just couldn't appreciate, as all of us can, we still pinch ourselves that we were able to accomplish that with the community dollars. So, we want to thank you all for that.
Most of them.
All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Massey.
All right, thank you. I'd like to start my report with, first of all, acknowledging all of you that are here tonight. Your engagement, your passion is really, really appreciated, and your voice is important to our process. So, from teachers to administrators to parents, community members, thank you so much for being out tonight. I would like to also add my voice to the congratulations of all of our students from National Merit Scholars, to our EMT kids, our athletic kids and their performance throughout the year. I think it's only stating the obvious that great things happen in the classroom, great things happen in performance halls as well as on athletic fields because of great teaching, great coaching, certainly great support at home. So, we certainly appreciate all of the accomplishments our kids are performing on a daily basis. A special thanks to Mr. Ernest and his... A special thanks to Mr. Ernest and his leadership at Forest View Elementary, and Shannon Wedger, thank you for being here for your presentation as well. We greatly appreciate that. A few more things. Over the years, the high school agriculture and FFA program that was mentioned earlier have received many awards and recognitions. This year, the Association of Agriculture Educators has recognized the Forest Lake Agriculture and FFA program as the outstanding middle and secondary school across the state of Minnesota. So a huge congratulations to our agriculture and FFA program. I would also like to recognize and congratulate the Forest Lake Environmental Club. Today, they received the Washington County Public Health Achievement Award for their work at the high school. In addition to raising awareness around environmental issues, they organize and run the school's recycling program, the food recycling program, as well as managing, planting and managing a pollination garden on campus here at the high school. Science teacher Devon Bocek is the advisor for the club, and she deserves a lot of recognition for her leadership in this area. Member Corcoran stole my thunder on this piece, but I'm going to also add my voice here as well. The high school music program will be performing at Bethel University tomorrow evening at Benson Great Hall on the campus of Bethel University. Concert starts at 7:30. This annual concert is a phenomenal display of music talent and is a real treat for anyone who is able to attend the concert. I would like to extend our gratitude to the music staff who have worked with these students over the years, and their parents who have supported their music development during this time. I don't know if Julie, you're taking money for tickets tonight, but you can certainly purchase tickets at the door. I would certainly encourage you to have a night out at Bethel University tomorrow night at 7:30. We currently, as was mentioned also earlier, have two bills in both the Minnesota House and Senate. The first bill is related to increasing school board levy authority, and the second is increased transportation sparsity aid to districts like Forest Lake and others that have to offset their transportation costs through their general fund because of the vast geographic area the district is facing with transportation. We are encouraged that both of these bills are still alive in both chambers. I would encourage everyone in the community to contact your local legislators and encourage their efforts to get these bills passed. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, Agenda Item 7, Approved Consent Agenda. Are there any items people would like pulled from 7-1 through 7-4?
7-3, please.
All right, any others? Do we have a motion to approve 7-1, 7-2, and 7-4?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, 7-3.
7-3, I just want to acknowledge the retirement of Ruth Miles, Special Education Per Professional at Columbus Elementary, effective May 23rd. It doesn't say her years of service, but I know she's been at the district many, many years and just been a great asset for that school, and we'll greatly miss her. So I want to thank her for... Oh, and also Delarae Laku, school bus driver. I know she's been involved in music and been part of this district for also many, many years. So I want to appreciate all her time and energy she's put in, and her love of music has been great at all the concerts and things like that, so thank you for those, too.
All right, do we have a motion to approve 7-3?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Great. Motion's approved. Attend Item 8, Donations, Member Odegaard?
Yes, eight of them to get through tonight. Start out with $2,307.48 from the High School Boys Track Booster Club to the School District High School Boys Track for payment toward track equipment. $238 from Jennifer Franklin and Harris to Ms. Franklin's classroom at Forest Lake Elementary, two Chromebooks and management licenses. A Selmer clarinet from Jenna Shooter in St. Louis Park to the Forest Lake Area Schools Wyoming Elementary Band valued at $100. $2,373.23 from the Dugout Club in Forest Lake to ISD 831 and the High School Baseball Team for payment for two part-time assistant coaches. And the last four here are all for the 2018 Hall of Fame sponsorship, so $500 from the Community Scholarship Foundation in Forest Lake, $500 from Olson Sewer Service and Olson's Excavating Service in Columbus, $500 from Johnson Turner Legal in Forest Lake, and $500 from Jesse R. Johnson Insurance in Forest Lake. And again, that was for the 2018 Hall of Fame sponsorship. All of those add up to $7,018.71, and with that, I move approval of accepting all of those donations.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Wow. Just incredible donations again every month. We are so blessed. Thank you so much.
Well said. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This might be a time to remind me that I had gone to something else this morning. It was the scholarship fundraising breakfast, and again, an amazing amount of people that are there, generous people who want to support our students, and they were able to raise $14,000 just this morning, and it's just thrilling to see that there are people out there who really want to help our students.
All right, thank you. All right, Old Business, 9-1, Approved Reductions for 2018-2019 of 1.7 million. Superintendent?
All right, for this agenda item, I am going to work my way through a series of slides that will begin to detail the recommendation that will be presented to you tonight. But before I do that, I think it's important for us to create the why. Why are we here tonight, facing the reductions that we are facing? And what I would submit to you is that there are three particular and very specific whys. Well, there are others. There are three key and specific pieces that lead to the context for tonight. The first is what you will see on this chart as lagging school funding. We are funded primarily, not exclusively, but primarily through state money by way of the pupils, the students that attend our schools. We're also funded in part by our local voter-approved operating referendum. This slide reflects, on the blue line, reflects the state per pupil funding over time. The red line indicates the funding level that we would be at as a state had the state kept up with inflation over the same period of time. You can see there that we have over a $2,500 spending gap per student across the state of Minnesota based on state funding. That creates an enormous challenge for Forest Lake and frankly, every school district in the state. The other issue facing our district is our voter-approved operating referendum. At $462 per student was approved in 2006. We have not seen an increase in that voter-approved operating referendum in 11 years. You can see where Forest Lake's voter-approved operating referendum is relative to other nearby school districts. And you can also see where we're at relative to the state and the group average as a whole. Forest Lake is the red bar on the left. The state average is the far yellow bar on the right. The average for the group presented here is the second yellow bar from the right. If you work your way across the chart, you'll see Centennial next to Forest Lake. After that, you'll see Mounds View. Then you'll see North St. Paul Maplewood. Following that is Roosevelt, Hastings, South Washington County Schools, Stillwater, the highest on the chart, 20 miles down the road, White Bear Lake. If you do the math, you'll see that White Bear Lake brings in over $1,500 more per student than our voter-approved referendum does in Forest Lake. The variance or the difference between Forest Lake and this group and the average of this group is almost $725 per student. That creates a secondary, a significant secondary challenge for Forest Lake. The third factor that creates the why for tonight is we were out for a voter-approved operating referendum last November, and we failed. And that failed referendum failed at 43% to 57%. We wouldn't be here tonight had that passed. So the fact that it failed creates the context for tonight in addition to the state funding and our voter-approved operating referendum. It's important to understand that context. To create a little context and history, the last three years, excluding this year, the last three years, the school district has cut a total of $5.5 million, cut or adjusted its budget by $5.5 million, including teachers, supplies, resources, support services, and so on. So the challenge for tonight is, and this was presented to administration by the school board in early February, to identify reductions totaling $2 million to create a balanced budget for the 18-19 school year. The slides that are forthcoming will detail recommendations for reductions up to, at $1.7 million. We will bring another recommendation on May, at the May 3 board meeting for an additional $300,000 for a total of a $2 million budget reduction for next year. So the recommendation for the 1.7 is as follows. First is a reduction to administration. All of the position reductions include total salary, benefits, and taxes. So an assistant principal reduction on top of an assistant principal reduction that was made last year at $150,000. You can see the ratio of an assistant principal to students at 1,050 to 1 at the middle school starting next year. Two APs will remain at the high school for roughly 1,000 students to one AP. And in addition to the assistant principal reduction is an MTSS coordinator providing support services and leadership and guidance across the district for students struggling in typical classrooms and building supports for kids into smaller areas of support at The next area of reduction for $160,000 is the elimination of bus routes. Four specific bus routes will be curtailed from our program, in part due to the efficiency of one junior high, middle school compared to two, but this will certainly result in longer bus routes for students. The next area of reduction will be in the areas of activities, and the recommendation there is an increase of activity fees from $1,750 per week to $21 a week per sport. We assess rates based on the weeks, the length of the sport. So if we have some sports at 12 weeks, some sports at 15 weeks, to create an equitable pay scale there across our sports, we assess the fee based on the week of the sports, the sport. So this recommendation is to move from $1,750 per week to $21. That totals a $40,000 additional revenue that offsets the reduction. In addition, a reduction of 24 assistant coaching positions. This will not result in the elimination of programs, but will result in the elimination or the reduction of assistant coaches that are assigned to sports across our 9-12 program. Once again, it does not take away any particular activity, but it'll take away an assistant coach that is there to, of course, guide and support that activity. We're looking at music, a raise in the music instrumental rental fee for students who are renting music equipment from the district, and that's an increase from 80 to 120 dollars for the year. And then lastly, there is a stipend that we, that we pay a teacher at the middle school, junior high, to assist with the management and facilitation of junior high activities. The next area of reduction is in the area of supports, positions, and related services for $302,800. Those reductions include two clerical positions for $98,800, a health office assistant reduction, assistant position reduction for $35,000, two custodial positions for a reduction of $93,000, a payroll assistant for $40,000, and the elimination of classified in-service day for $36,000. The next area of reduction would be in the area of services and resources for $253,650. The first item there is, with the emergence of upgraded HVAC systems and lighting retrofit for LED across our buildings, we're realizing an actual savings of $45,050. We are also reducing secondary supply budget by $50,000, recommending that we also move from paying for the advanced placement exam fee for students and passing that exam fee back to students, so eliminating the district cost for covering the AP exam for $22,600. Shifting $25,000 of district costs to Achievement Integration Program, an increase of our high school parking fee from $125 to $200 per semester. It's fair to say that that will certainly be among, if not the highest, in the state. Reduction of our parking guard at $28,000, and the reduction of the cost that we pay to cover traffic control on Goodview after school. That service will still be done, but we're going to shift that, that work to our three SRO officers. We are, as you'll see later in the agenda, we are planning to keep our three SRO officers. We still have the same number of students, and given school safety that we have, that we face and the significant need around school safety, we believe three SROs are critical to our system. Because we have one less school with the combining of our two junior highs, we'll have one and a half SROs at the high school, one at the middle school, another half at a learning center building in CLC. So those folks, that one and a half position at the high school will pick up some of the work of the parking guard. Next area of reduction is in the area of special education. We've identified $211,500 of reduction in positions and hours of service through paraprofessionals. The actual savings to the general fund because of the state and federal component of special education is $105,750 savings toward our 1.7. And the capturing of an additional $100,000 of third-party building for students who are eligible for medical assistance reimbursing, reimbursement based on the services we provide as a school district. And lastly, would be for $380,007.6 teachers, in addition to all those other reductions, for a total of $380,000. And those teachers are essentially, at this point, out of the secondary system. As you can see, we still have $300,000 to go, and our effort here is to provide reductions that, that trim and cut back in an equitable fashion across the school district. So we will capture that in a complete way with the additional $300,000 reduction in May. The 7.6 at the secondary level will not eliminate programs, but will increase class sizes essentially across many of our departments, from our seventh and eighth grade middle school program to our next year nine-through-12 high school program. And the last slide is a summary of all those slides for a total of $1.7 million of reductions.
All right. First, I think we'll have any questions we have about the proposed reductions, and then when we're done with questions, then we'll have, put a motion on the table and discuss it further. So, questions? So, questions?
No, we're discussing this a long time.
Dr. Massey, could you discuss a little bit about the process for coming to this list of recommendations?
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity. We, we have met for hours and hours as an administrative team, examining all sorts of possibilities that, and it gets harder and harder year after year as we continue to make these cuts, but the administrative team from our directors to our principals have been examining their programs, their staffing needs, the registration needs for students and servicing students, and have been working since February identifying different options, vetting them out, considering them, studying them, in an effort to bring this recommendation tonight.
Okay. Any further questions?
I just appreciate the time that's put into this. It's so difficult, and I've seen so many administration have to go through this pain, and seen so many staff have to live with the pain, and so I understand how you've made the decisions, but I hope there's no one in here that has happened about it.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the reductions for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as stated?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I have to echo what Karen, Member Morehead, said, that these cuts are, they take a lot of time and energy. It's a lot of critical thoughtful thinking. This gradual attenuation of our finances and being underfunded, eleven years without a levy. My daughter was in fourth grade, and now she's a senior, going to be a senior in college. It's really sad to have gotten to this point where we're eating away now at the real core. We're taking from special ed. We're trying to be fair, but it's astounding the dollars we've been cutting. Five point five million in three years. And we just have to stabilize our fund balance from twenty thirteen at eight point five million to now, twenty eighteen, one point seven. We need to do, we need to, we don't have a choice.
Robert Peterson?
I think, I just want to make clear for everyone in the room that there's nobody at this table that enjoys the process that we're currently engaged in, and there's certainly no, no joy in seeing the reductions of full-time staff, especially as the largest employer in this community. Every time we reduce a person, we take money right out of the businesses downtown. We take money out of the families that live in this community. And I would love to be sitting here expanding programs instead of cutting programs and taking away from the things that, that make this town amazing. My daughter's twenty, and the support that was around her education when she entered the school district compared to what support is available for my now youngest son in the fourth grade, it, it's amazing the difference, having seen it, the, the growth in class size, the, the additional support you can get when a student's struggling that's no longer available, the support for students who are high achievers, right? We have students who, who do amazing things, and we no longer have the programs to support that. And I hope that this room is, is really full tonight, and I hope to see all of you as we move forward looking to fix this problem in the fall. I hope to see each and every one of you out there in the community helping move that forward so that we can, we can make the budget expansions in the future and restore some of the cuts.
I want to thank everyone for coming here. It's good to see some passion in the room, and I hope that you're here because these cuts are equally unacceptable to you as they are to us. I'm on the board, this is my fourth year, and it's very draining, and I hope to be on the board someday where we can add programs back for our kids, because every single one of these cuts hurts our kids, and they deserve better.
Well, I've been on the board about eleven years, and I first went on the board just to improve things, and I, you know, I was very hopeful for great additions to programs and make more robust programs, and, and it has not happened in my eleven years. So it is very drained, it's a good word for it, and our kids deserve better. And it's amazing what we have done over the years to keep the programs stable. I mean, we've not, we've kept programs, we have not, and class sizes have increased, but we haven't really hit the classroom as hard. This is to the point now that that is going to have to happen. We have nothing, there's nothing else that we can cut that would not be in the classroom. So, yeah, like Jill said, it'd be really great, you guys are very supportive by being here, and I really hope you see out the polls, because we really need to get our kids the money that they deserve for our schools. We have the buildings fixed, now we need to get it for the teachers and for our kids to have it, even school supplies, I mean, you know, just all, the things that you just expect in the classroom, that's even, has to be reduced. So, yeah, we appreciate you being here, and hopefully we can get this resolved at the next levy.
I didn't mention it all. I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot more.
Yeah, Karen.
I want to go forward.
Yeah, I know.
All right. Member Ottergar?
Yes. So, you know, I appreciated Dr. Massey's intro to that PowerPoint presentation to kind of demonstrate the lie. You know, as a, as a board, we have extremely limited control over the revenue side of the equation. We get allocated funds from the state for the, per pupil formula, which, I mean, is totally inadequate as we saw, and then communities supplement that with operating referendums, and you saw how abysmal ours was. So we have no control over that. We can ask, put the question on the ballot, but we can't ram it through, you know, even though we're elected officials, we can't do that. We have to go out to the public. What we do have control over is the expense side, as evidenced by the cuts that we have to make in order to balance our budget. So, you know, with that said, we, remember Tyson and I heard, you know, from the, primarily the music, theater, arts supporters this evening at the listening session, I'll be frank, there was some music stuff on here early, in early drafts. We don't pass a operating referendum in November, there will be a lot of music and theater stuff on here next April. No getting around that. You know, the other thing, too, is that there's still three hundred thousand dollars that we're, you know, that we still need to cut in order to balance our budget, and you probably have seen, you know, what's coming next on the agenda, or, excuse me, on two from now, nine point three, potentially closing Central Montessori Elementary to save three hundred thousand dollars. All of you music supporters out there, I, you know, appreciate your passion. Before you leave tonight, I'd like you to come up here and look at this mom who's basically been in tears the entire meeting, and her two daughters, who I'm guessing go to Central Montessori. Look them in the eye as you leave the meeting tonight. That's basically the choice that's before us, is to lose where they go to school or make cuts to the music arts programs. And, you know, you were tossing your study around left and right. Several assumptions were wrong with that study. You can work with Dr. Massey on that to kind of get proper assumptions first, then have an economics discussion with us, but until that's fixed, that doesn't really hold a lot of weight. So, yeah, it's, it's tough, it's, you know, a tough decision, but these are the decisions that are before us.
Yeah, I think for my part, I've just been very fortunate to, my kids have come through the school district, and I've seen the incredible work that this district does, and giving my kids, who are both amazing kids, the, the kind of support they needed at the right times in their life to find their way. And, and so, you know, on one hand, I, I, I look at the, the programs we offer and the, and the great teachers we have, and the environments in our elementaries as we saw tonight, and I just, I just have this joy in my heart over that. And then on the other hand, I see a legislature that shortchanges us every session. I think the House of Representatives came in at one point, what, around one point three percent on their first offer for a yearly increase, and that would have been about three million in cuts if, if it would have ended up with that. And it's just wrong, because the state has been seeing, since the econ, the economy was bad, the economy's better, the state has been seeing regular inflationary crease, increases in the amount of money they're collecting, and they are keeping that, and they're shortchanging us. And that has to change. This district needs to recognize that the state is not fulfilling its obligations that it took over ten years ago, and it needs to pass a levy to start funding these schools. These schools are worth it, because these schools are about the kids that are in them, and the, the hopes that those kids have, the dreams they have, and that when they leave these doors, that they can go out in the world fully prepared. And that's what this, that's what that spending's about. It's not some philosophical discussion of high taxes, low taxes. It's about a very real discussion about our kids and what we want to dedicate to them and giving them the right start in life. I feel like we do a great job as a school district, but having to make cuts like this just, I don't know, it's sad and it's angering all at the same time, and I guess I'll leave you with that. Is there any further discussion? Member Morehead?
Well, I just think that, I look at all the programs, and I don't look at one or the other. I think we have to be fair, and I think our, our administration has tried very hard to do that. But the bottom line is, no matter which program you're fighting for, we're all in this together, and we all have to help each other. So if it's not your program, it's someone else's program, they're all our kids. I don't have any kids in school anymore, but they're all really important people that are going to be in charge of our country, and we can't give them enough time and energy. And so I hope that no one goes out of here thinking, well, I got mine, or I didn't get mine, or whatever, because this is an all-school problem, and we have to fix it across the board.
Let it go, Karen. Let it go, Karen.
So I just wanted to add one more thing. As I sit up here, I'm just so overwhelmed by the thought of these cuts, and I think that everyone up here feels that way, and it's, I'm in my sixth year, and I'm looking at big dollars, astounding numbers that we cut every year, and you know, it, it's not really our decision, it's kind of been what the communities have decided. The fourteen communities, that somehow we can't all wrap our arms together and work towards getting our referendums, whether it's a levy for learning, like Karen, Member Morehead, said thank you with the bond, but we need to wrap our arms together and work at this, because we have fourteen communities, we have a large geographic area that our district covers, and so it's the reality that we face. And every year, you know, six years and longer for others, sitting up here cutting, and so we hope that we can get passionate and all get behind each other in all of our communities.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Ottergar?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Motion's approved. All right. Nine-two, adopt resolution for non-renewal of probationary teachers. I think if you look in your documentation, you'll have the list. It's like this.
Oh, I don't, do I have that? I don't think I do. Probably inside one of these. I don't think we got one.
Pass that down.
We'll share it. Pass it down. Here we go.
Okay, we ready? All right. Do we have a motion to, to adopt the resolution for non-renewal of probationary teachers?
Move to approve, nine point two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Ottergar?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
And Member Morehead?
Aye.
All right. Resolution's approved. Nine-three, set public hearing date for the purpose of consideration of closing Central Montessori Elementary School.
So this item ties back to nine dot one, which was the one point seven million dollar budget reduction you just approved. As was mentioned then, we still have three hundred thousand dollars to go, and I'm asking that you set a public hearing for the consideration of closing Montessori Elementary School, Central Montessori Elementary School, and I would propose that date be Thursday, April twenty-sixth at seven PM here at Forest Lake Area High School and Middle School. We will have two public notices that will be posted in the paper next week and the, in the following week, and then we'll have the hearing, if approved, on April twenty-sixth at seven PM.
All right. Do we have a motion to set a public hearing for the purpose of consideration of closing the Central Montessori Elementary School for Thursday, April twenty-sixth at seven PM?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I don't know what to say.
I don't either. We have to talk about it.
It was the same at the public hearing, I think, who have time and we'll be discussing it further.
Okay.
I agree.
If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Ottergar?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
All right. Why don't we take a, no break?
Yeah. Take a five-minute break.
Nine-four, levy, levy referendum discussion.
All right. I will take the first part of this, I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman Rayfield. One, I don't want to take a break, because I want to make sure we don't lose anybody in the audience for this discussion.
Oh, yeah, the levy.
He's right. He's right.
Oh, yeah, that's really, that's true.
So, following the November referendum, the school board asked administration to study, put together a process to engage the community to analyze what happened with our November seventeenth referendum. You know that the November seventeenth referendum was a referend, two, two questions. One was a nine million dollar bond to address facility needs that were not covered in the two thousand fifteen bond referendum, and the second was a seven hundred and fifty dollar per student increase to our voter-approved operating referendum, moving four hundred and sixty-two dollars per student to twelve twelve per student. If you recall the chart I put up earlier, you'll know that twelve hundred and twelve dollars per student is still below the state average, or in the average of our comparison group. So we were looking to go to the middle of that comparison group. That referendum failed, as I mentioned before, forty-three percent to fifty-seven percent, and we employed the Bill, the Morris Leatherman Company to do a follow-up survey, and they conducted a survey of our, our voters in our community, and essentially, they, they polled seven hundred members of our community, seven hundred and fifty, I should say. Two hundred and fifty of those folks that were surveyed were parents who voted in the referendum. Two hundred and fifty were parents who did not vote in the referendum, and two hundred and fifty community members who did not have students in our schools. A few highlights from that survey, and I'll just go through them quickly. Thirty-five percent of the households have students in our schools, so thirty-seven percent, thirty-five percent of the homes in our district have kids that attend our schools. Six percent of the households in the district have students that attend other schools, other schools bordering our district, or charter schools, or private schools in our district. Fifty-eight percent of the households do not have school-aged children at home. Most voted on election day versus early voting. Overall voter turnout, thirty percent. Voter turnout of our parents, forty-one percent. Good news is of the parents who did vote, they supported the operating- Good news is of the parents who did vote, they supported the operating referendum at 78%. Non-parents supported the referendum at 47%. And that's a challenge. It'll be a challenge moving forward. We heard from the survey that taxes overall, from city, county, school, district taxes, were a major consideration for non-parents. Bottom line is, we did not convince our voters that there was a compelling need. In addition to the survey, we held six community conversations throughout the district. You'll notice on these locations that these community conversations were not held in our media centers in our elementary schools. We held them in the communities. In other words, we went out to the people, if you will. And we had an incredibly impressive turnout of close to 200 people that came out to talk to us. And we heard a lot of really good constructive input and feedback. We met at the Linwood Community Center, Scandia Community Center, Lino Lake City Hall, Columbus City Hall, Split Rocks in Wyoming, and the American Legion in Forest Lake. Thirdly, we formed a school funding task force. And I have to admit, I was a bit nervous forming such a task force, thinking I wouldn't get anybody to want to come to a school funding task force. But we had 20 community members who invested over six hours, two hours, on three different nights. The first night, we dug deep into our revenue sources for the district. On the second night, we dug deep into our expense budget as a district. And the third night, we asked for critical insights of our task force members and to provide guidance for the school board. And I've asked one of our committee members, Tiffany Borschheim from Scandia, to give us a quick summary of that final night. Is Tiffany here? Okay, she must have, I'm sure it's on my phone, that she had a conflict. Understood. But we had really a robust discussion and some incredible insights from our task force members. I would tell you that their guidance, knowing where we were at with our revenue budget and our expense budget and the needs that we face as a school district, that their guidance was an increase of our, to set a, their recommendation was to set a operating referendum for next November. And ranging from $500 per student increase up to $1,300 per student increase. That comes from the need that they saw from our expense budget in comparison to our revenue budget. They weren't just drawing numbers out of the hat. That was their analysis. So I know that presents quite a challenge for the board. But they provided a good set of guidance for you in terms of that range to consider moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over.
All right, so I think, so we've got a lot to discuss on the levy. And I thought what I'd do is I would break it down into some easy questions and some hard questions. And I'll go through the questions first and just get agreement on the board that this is what we want to discuss. And so what I wrote down is, do we feel like we need to go out for a levy? Do we feel like we're not, if we go out for a levy, are we dropping the bond that we had last time? When would we like to go out? How long would a levy, how long would it last? I'd like to talk about the priorities that we set for the spending if the last one passed. And I have that on a sheet that I think was passed out. And then lastly, I'd like to address the question of how much we think we should go out for. And does that seem all right with everybody that we cover that? All right, so I think what we'll do is we'll have our discussion and then if we can, if we feel like we're at a good place, we could have a motion tonight to move forward. If not, then we've got a meeting in about two weeks that we could bring up the discussion again and then, but that's kind of drop dead for moving forward. All right, so on the first question, I kind of feel like I know the answers, but do we feel like we need to go out for levy?
Obviously.
Yeah, obviously, yes.
All right.
We're in agreement.
I knew that would be easy, but I had to ask it.
Not maybe easy, but important and necessary.
As far as, we had a bond for repairing, last time we had both a levy and a bond. It sounds like people are comfortable with not just going forward with a single levy. That sound right?
While we still have bond needs, our athletics and arts and auditorium need upgrades that our kids deserve. It's too confusing for community members with two questions on the ballot to distinguish between bond money. We already gave you how many millions of dollars in bonds. You didn't really understand that, the difference. So we really need to focus on levy-operating money.
So I would echo Member Olson. I think we heard that at community conversations, that that just kind of muddies the water when we have a bond and a levy on there. So I'm in agreement. We should just be out for levy for learning.
All right, so it sounds like we're agreed on that?
Yeah.
When do we think we would go out?
First Tuesday in November.
I mean, are we all pretty comfortable with next November?
Well, and again, we only have certain times when we can. We don't want to have a session that you pay for when they're going out in November. But again, with all the confusion that's going to be out there with city politics, federal politics, everybody's politics, it kind of can get lost. So it's going to make it a lot harder for us to go out there and make sure people have zero in on that school portion. But it's, it only makes sense that we do it in the general.
The last, the last time we passed a levy, it was for eight years. What are people thinking this time?
I would say 10, but I don't know if that's too long.
I was kind of thinking 10 as well, if we could not have to come back. But eight?
Long ago when I was here, you know, we'd only go after five years because we were trying to gain the trust and trying to show them that every five years we'd show them what we did and what happened. And, you know, that gets really old really quick because people forget and they think it was yesterday. And so we increased it to eight. And I still am of the opinion that they would like us to see it shorter. Most districts I know go to 10. Some even go with an inflation factor on it for a certain number of years. But we have to get this thing going and we have to fix the programs that we are messing up. And so I want to go with a conservative level of eight. But I, you know, I see reasoning for 10, but I make eight.
Eight to 10.
So people would be comfortable if we went with eight then, or?
The inflation factor scares me a tad.
And isn't that sad? Because, you know, it's there for us. And it would be nice not to have to, but I agree with you, it would really again tell people, let people think we're doing something funny if we're putting something like that on there. So we don't want anybody to think we're doing anything funny. Strictly the eight-year.
Well, the only reason why I said 10 is it's two more years, but you're right, the inflation factor is a consideration there. But I just think then we're not coming back and we know that it's expensive every time we're out trying to, you know, go out for a referendum, so. But I'm fine with eight.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so that was the easy part.
Yeah, let me interrupt. I sincerely apologize. I mentioned a very active levy supporter the last time. But it wasn't Jennifer Bredow who is here to make that presentation. So my apology, Jennifer, if you are here, accept my apologies. But I know you've got a report to share from our school funding task force. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing me to provide a report on the work of the school funding task force. My name is Jennifer Bredow and I'm a parent of a first and second grader at Linwood Elementary. I'm also a biology teacher at Oak Ramsey Community College. And last fall, I devoted a considerable amount of my time to the Vote Yes campaign, which was my first experience being involved in a referendum campaign. As we all know, the referendum vote failed last November, which led to continued conversations about what the community values and desires from Forest Lake Area Schools District. After several community conversations took place in all six communities, I along with several others, were invited to be a part of the recent school funding task force. The task force was a community-based group comprised of a demographically diverse array of members, representing all six communities of the district, Forest Lake, Lino Lakes, Scandia, Columbus, Wyoming, and Linwood. Members of the task force included parents of current students, parents of students who have already graduated, as well as members without children. Additionally, members of the task force included constituents who voted yes in November, those who clearly voted no in November for a variety of reasons, and those who are still unsure about their support for the referendum. Regardless of the level of support for the past referendum, all parties brought excellent questions to the table and fostered thoughtful conversation and analysis of the issues at hand. It was important that all voices be heard. The objectives of this task force were to, one, increase our understanding of school finance; two, understand the district's current funding needs; three, answer all questions and address concerns identified by members of the task force; and four, provide guidance for the school board with respect to future funding initiatives. Ultimately, our group was charged with considering, what do we value as a community for our schools with respect to the type of programs and opportunities provided for our students? And what additional funding is necessary to match this value? During the month of March, we met three times to delve deep into the financial situation and develop a greater understanding of where we are and where we want to be. We spent an extensive amount of time reviewing funding considerations, which included examining state funding history, local levy history and transportation costs, reviewing the district's operating budget and history of budget adjustments and reductions, and critically evaluating the teacher's salary schedule. As one can imagine, when 20 individuals from a variety of backgrounds come together in a room, one could not expect everyone to agree on all the issues. And as mentioned before, critics of the referendum sat in the room. However, by the end of the third meeting, it was evident that everyone on the task force could agree on the severity and urgency of the financial situation facing Forest Lake Area Schools District. I would now like to share with you some of the comments made by members of the task force. And as I don't have direct quotes for all, for some, I will be paraphrasing. "I value the career and technical education opportunities offered, and I want to see those retained. I want workforce-ready kids." "Public safety and education are a priority to me. I now have a deeper understanding of the critical need." "I value the music program, and the high quality of the teachers does not match the salary they are paid." "The starting salary of teachers in this district is too little, and the class sizes are too large. Why would a teacher choose to do this? With class sizes so large, I am worried my child will fall behind." "I am concerned about the number of teachers leaving for positions in other districts. How do we retain high-quality teachers?" "There is definitely a gap between perception and reality. There is a compelling need. How do we close that gap? Asking for $750 is not nearly enough. If this was my business, I would have closed the doors." "We are so far behind the eight ball. As things continue to move forward, I feel this is a 911. My hair is on fire." "Because of the limited state funding, we are playing a rigged game, but I can make a difference with my tax dollars. This is the most important investment we will make in our lives." So that brings me to tonight's main objective, which is to share with you the consensus of our group regarding moving forward. The group has come to the consensus that there is a compelling need for pursuing another operating levy. While the range of suggested amounts varied from asking for $500 per student to $1,300 per student, most members agreed that somewhere between $800 and $1,000 per student matches the need that has become quite evident to our task force. Additionally, while there was discussion about waiting one year to ask for this referendum, the general consensus of this group was to ask for it this coming November. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Next, last time we went out for a referendum, we put together a set of spending priorities that if the referendum passed, a way of communicating to the public, this is how we think the money needs to be spent if we're able to raise it. And we had reduce class size averages with an emphasis on early elementary grades, restore and enhance classroom instructional resources that were reduced or eliminated through previous budget reductions, make efforts to attract and retain the best teachers and staff, enhance supports for struggling students, expand gifted and accelerated learning opportunities for students, retain and enhance educational opportunities for students, including music programs, career and technical programs, elective course opportunities, and college-level courses for high school students, and establish financial stability in an effort to avoid future budget reductions. So that's what we had last time. I don't feel like our thinking has diverged from that, but do people feel like there's, do we want to change this, or I, personally, I feel like it hits the nail on the head, but.
I agree.
I think it's really good, yeah.
So the question then is, how much? And it's a difficult question because there's politics there's involved and there's, you know, just a lot of different questions. How do we think the best way to, do we just each kind of go through and talk about our thoughts on the amount, or? All right. Member Morehead, you want to start?
Well, again, I'm a conservative thinker. I want this to pass. I want our programs to come back and stay strong. So while I think the task force did a great job, they really dug into the numbers. It's something that I haven't been able to do and understand. Thank the Lord, we have people that do do that. And they came up with a higher number than I would. So we went out with 745 last time?
750.
750.
750. And we took off the bond part. And so there's a little wiggle room there, but we also have those needs that are still there. So I would say somewhere very close to what we went out for last time.
Member Corcoran?
I also, I mean, it's great that task force did a fabulous job. And of course, I'd always want to go up for 1,000. To me, that would be just the right round number for me. But I know that that is pretty excessive for our pretty conservative district. So I would say about 850 would be a good, like in the middle, a little more than the 750. Because I remember we read the report that we should at least go 10% more. That kind of came across in our, could be, could be passed in our information. So I would say about 850 would be good.
Member Olson?
I thought Jennifer gave a great report. Her recommendation was 800 to 1,000. So I'd be comfortable with 900 right in the middle.
Yeah, for me, I, I kind of feel, yeah, I'm conflicted because it really feels like, you know, we really took a close look at it in those sessions. But I kind of feel like 850 might be a number that would be easier for us to talk about from a political standpoint only. I think as far as our needs are concerned, I think it's sufficient, but I, yeah, I don't know. Let me throw 850 out there. Member Tyson?
Well, I tend to agree with Member Olson that, you know, the task force, and I'd like to thank Jennifer and thank that group when I was there. to thank Jennifer and thank that group when I was there, they were really hardworking and critical thinkers, but I think the 900, kind of just really going with what they are recommending and being at that high end to really be able to stabilize our fund balance, to not have to go back. You know, we've looked at those slides with White Bear Lake, Mounds View. We know where we are. We're way down here. We've lost a whole nother year of doing this, a whole nother round of cuts. We do want to add things back in that we've been cutting over many years, six, eight, 10 years. So I just feel that we need to be at that upper end, and we need to respect the work that the task force did, because they did a great job, and that is hard work. They looked at our reduction history, which one curriculum coordinator, when we had 11... So if we want to start building and getting back to a point, we really need to be at the 900 amount or more. So I'll go with 900, but, you know, I'd like to maybe think a little longer, because I could support more, and I want to really respect the work of the school funding task force.
Member Odegaard?
You know, it's a balance of what we need and what we potentially can get. We need 1,300, we need 1,500. We're not going to get that. So, you know, one thing I'll say, Member Morehead, I know you kind of wanted to stay close to the 750. 750 was before we made these cuts. So if we don't increase it somewhat to make up for these, we're already behind from where we were going to start if it had passed last November. So, I mean, it's only appropriate to increase it to try to make up for what we just did and what we will do in the coming weeks to round out our cuts. That said, you know, I'm, you know, 850, 900, you know, right around that range is kind of where I am as well. But I also would like to preferably not set the number tonight, and let us talk about it some more and come to some consensus on a number together, I think would be wise.
Okay.
But I'm right around that 850, 900 range.
Okay, Member Peterson?
So, absolutely respectful of Member Morehead's position and her having been on the board the longest and probably having done this the most times, knowing how difficult it is to pass a levy in our community, and also living in the highest taxed portion of our district up there in Chicago County, these things personally affect me at a pretty high level, and my neighbors, right? But I don't feel that we could possibly go for less than 900, and the reason being the cuts we've made tonight and making up that difference, and all of the things that we need to do to continue to support a school. We're losing teachers every year, sometimes for $10,000, sometimes for $20,000 to other districts, and our teachers are doing amazing things with less and less and less. The things they buy for their classroom, the things that our parents are shipping into school, it is ridiculous. A school should supply a learning environment that, you know, doesn't have 30-plus students in a classroom where four or five of those students are struggling, and a teacher couldn't possibly have the amount of time to spend with the four or five students that are struggling, much less all of the students. And I don't know how we get there even at $900, but I don't know that we can feasibly go for less than that. I agree with Member Odegaard, 1,300 is probably where we should be, but realistically, 900, I think, is where we need to go.
One more thing that I'll add to, you know, I know there's still more discussion to comment, you know, whether we come to a number consensus tonight or not. If we don't come to it tonight, I'm guessing the audience at our next meeting will be significantly less, so I wanted to make this point that, you know, we can set the question. As a district, we can provide information. You are the ones that have to advocate for it. We can advocate for it. It's got to come from the community, and there's a lot of people in this room tonight. You better get out, and you better pound the pavement, and you got to make it happen, because, you know, while, again, we can provide information, Dr. Massey can talk till he's blue in the face about our funding shortfalls, you know, it has to come from the community. So we need the support of all of you who are active tonight, and it's fantastic to see that. It's got to come from you if it's going to happen.
Well said. I guess after listening to everyone, I thought I'd be prepared to move an amount tonight, but I'm not close to the 900 yet because we paid money for Morris to go do the survey, and there's a 10% this way or that way. So that gives us a 10% chance that we wouldn't do it, and then maybe a 10% that we could, but higher than the 10%, I'm not sure. I just want to go out and go through this again. And so, looking at the staff that we have, looking at the people that we have, I thought we would be able to accomplish most of what we had last week with the 750. That's what we told the folks. And yes, there have been changes now, and yes, there are programs that we want to come back. So I could maybe go the 10% over what we had last time, but I wouldn't be willing to do anything over that at this time. So I would be anxious to hear from people, they're the voters, but from my time here, I'm thinking we're pushing it to go the 10%.
And it sounds like, Member Odegaard, you're interested in holding off the decision for a couple of weeks?
And I echo that.
I do, too. We have more time to think about it, yeah.
We're definitely going to do it.
But we're close.
Just finalize them.
We're close, and we all agree on the need. It's just a matter of what's going to be successful.
That's fine. I agree.
Yeah, that sounds great. Are there any further, anything else people would like to add to the discussion before we move on?
No.
All right, thanks. That was a good discussion.
Yep, that was really good.
All right, 9-5, School District System Accountability Policy, 6-16.
The next three policies actually are, the recommendation on each of these next three policies is for deletion of these policies. Each of these policies and the provisions within these policies are covered under current policy 613 and 614. So as a result, there is really no need to continue with these policies.
So that's not, so that's policy 616 we're deleting?
Correct.
All right. Do we have a motion to delete School District System Accountability Policy, 616?
Thank you for coming. Your children were so well behaved.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
All right. The motion's approved, and I think with that, I think we're going to take a seven-minute break.
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
98% staff and Sam.
Should we proceed?
I think we can proceed.
Let's, Agenda Item 9-6, Deletion of School District Insurance of Preparatory and High School Standards Policy, 617. Do we have a motion to delete that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Who knows? Girl's coming. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. 9-7, Deletion of Assessment of Standard Achievement Policy, 618.
Moved to approve, 9-7.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
All right. 9-8, Approved 2018, 2019 School Calendar Adjustment.
Yeah, this particular agenda item is related to the first and second day of the school year starting next school year. As you are fully aware, 50% of the students, ninth and 10th graders, will be new to the high school next year. The high school team has been working all year to plan for that transition of those students, and they've identified a plan to provide orientation, exposure to the school, introduction to teachers and their classes on the first day for ninth and 10th graders, thereby moving the first day of school for 11th and 12th graders to the second day of the school year, which would be September 5th. So this particular item moves the first day of school for 11th and 12th graders to September 5th, the first day of school for ninth and 10th graders, and the scheduled first day of school, September 4th.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve, 9-8?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Does this change the last day of school for anybody?
It does not.
Okay.
I think we've had good discussion about this already, and I think I added that I've talked to colleagues in districts that are already doing this, and they just feel like it's a big success.
It's a big help. And with the new change at the high school, I think it's going to be a great idea, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
9-9, Approved New Bank Account.
Yeah, this is a procedural piece, as you're aware. Unfortunately, the administration, we received notification of fraudulent checks being deposited or cast with the district's account numbers. Essentially, what happened is somebody got ahold of one of our checks and created fraudulent checks, and as a result of that, we have gone through extensive work to validate that our funds for only authorized outstanding checks occurred. A new account was set up, new signatures were required, and we need approval to approve a new bank account.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve, 9-9?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye.
All right. 9-10, Recommendation to Award Southwest School Remodel.
So on the second page of this document, you can see all of the different bidders that were related to each work scope. We had very good coverage. We had three bidders or more on all of the work scopes, with the exception of Work Scope 5, 7, and 4. We had nine bidders in the largest work scope, which was mechanical. And our little bidder, McDowell Company, is actually presently here at the high school in the works, so we're really excited. We're going to be awarding the Viking Company, Midwest Asphalt Services, that's already here at the high school, Fight is already over at the middle school. Kirk Masters, Red Cedar, Rochon Corporation is already at the middle school, and they've done some work in the high school. All West Construction Company does roofing for us, and Lake Area Electric. So we'd like to approve the bids in the amount, well-known, $521,428, it's under budget.
Wow, under budget. Like, under budget.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the recommendation to award Southwest school remodel?
Move to approve, 9-10. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. So I just want to point out a point with Rochon Corporation being awarded the project. You all sat here prior to my time on the board, listening to Mr. Adam Hansen from the ABC tell you how no non-union construction company would ever bid or receive any of the work in this school project. And for the record, Rochon Companies is not a union signatory contractor. They are, in fact, non-union, and have been awarded multiple projects throughout this and will, of course, be awarded this project again tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It's good to know. Thank you, Member Peterson.
And it is good to know. They do have to make them some concessions, but it's good to see that they were willing to make them, and we're happy to have them.
Okay. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye.
They're seen as a trusted ally and a trusted resource. Oftentimes, kids go to them when they have difficult situations involving domestic situations, relational issues. They've become a real vital resource that we provide for students throughout our secondary system.
All right. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
All right. Motion. 9-12, approve 2017, 2018 budget adjustments. Director Martini?
Just like Member Odegaard mentioned early in the meeting about the finance committee, you reviewed this budget adjustment subsequent to the auditors coming in to do a revenue test. This is only one-time money, but it will help our fund balance, and it's long-term facility maintenance, revenue, and capital reserve. So we will use this to supplement capital outlay budget, which will go towards plus purchases that we'll be bringing to you either in two weeks or at your maiden.
Okay.
Good idea. That's good.
Do we have a motion to approve, 9-12?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
All right. Approved. 10, New Business, 10-1, First Reading of Discipline Policy, 5-15.
Yeah, now looking for approval tonight. First reading of this policy. The only notable change in this policy is a change in the language of the reference to camera, to student recording device. Simple change there. And changing the name in the policy from Youth Service Bureau to Lake Center for Youth and Family are the notable changes in this policy.
Okay.